I'm going to take a few things out of order tonight. The first item on my agenda, as well as on the agenda for the entire city council, is a heartfelt thank you to council member Linda Farmer, who is going to be departing us as a result of, I guess, a move to sunnier climes. I'm not sure that the temperature is any warmer down on the annex down there at Pierce County, but we wish you incredible success and joy in your new position. In this holiday season, we have to talk about joy. And we know from our work with you for the last few years that you will do a bang up job down there because you are professional, you are passionate, you are a people person, you know how to play well in the sandbox, which is important as you've come to learn here in Lakewood. And you're just an all around darn good person, Linda, and we have really appreciated your work with us. It's been a pleasure to work with you. It's been certainly a pleasure to serve with you and we will miss you. And so I will certainly allow everyone to have their piece, but we're going to present you with a photograph. I know Bryn's here and we actually have some lighting in here. This is the wrong one. This is the wrong one. I was going to give you the EDB Excellent Ten Award. You know, it's an amazing thing that you've done. Yeah, yeah, the whole EDB. Yeah, exactly, exactly. We are going to present you this plaque, not the EDB plaque, but you are a fabulous ten in our hearts. Councilmember Linda Farmer, January 2020 through December 2022, in honor and sincere appreciation of your exceptional leadership and outstanding service to the Lakewood community. Your hard work and dedication have contributed to the success of those around you and the city as a whole. So again, thank you very much for your service. It's been a pleasure. I'm going to pass it around the dais, starting with council member Bran Center to extend a few well wishes and then I'll give you the floor. Pass this to you and then we'll do a photograph.
Well, I would echo the mayor in saying that it's been a pleasure to have you be a part of our team and be able to go and do that. I've always appreciated how good a listener you are going forward. But more than that, I've really appreciated your willingness to take on some of the most difficult things that we have had to do, such as being our point person on getting shape started and going forward to address what was, is a real need for the community and working on the sex offenders policy board, to be able to go and do that, to address something that is certainly in the mind of many citizens in our community. And as well as taking a look at those sorts of things, like even getting involved and volunteering to choosing the folks to be on the tree advisory and the library advisory committee. I think, you know, so that showed to me that, you know, you're a person who isn't just here to vote, but you're a person who's here to step up and I've appreciated that.
Thank you, Mr. Bran Center. Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Mayor. Linda, you have been so welcoming and so supportive. Your mentorship to me has just been beyond measure and I appreciate your guidance on all the things from policy and government to just the regular everyday friendship girly stuff that we share in common. So he is. So I will miss you here on the dais. I will miss you in council. And thank you for making me feel so welcome, as you all have, joining in as the last one. So I will not be the freshman anymore, so.
Yeah.
But thank you so much. I'm not going to say I'm going to miss you because I am going to see you still and that I am looking forward to our continued friendship and I'll just miss you here though. So thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bokey?
Thank you, Mayor Whalen, and thank you for your time. You've been an asset to this council and therefore an asset to this community and lots of great ideas, lots of energy that has been very helpful and really your thorough understanding of what we're here to do and what we as a city can do. And I really look forward to working with you in the future. So I get the, I get the opportunity to hopefully work with you in the future on, in helping make your department the best there is. So I'm hopeful that we get to, to at least talk once in a while about the auditor's office. So I look forward to that.
Deputy Mayor Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, Linda, I will tell you, when I link, when there was a missing link in our original council, we were concerned if we were going to be able to carry on and work as well together as we had in the past. And I can say without a doubt, we didn't miss a beat. We're happy to have had you and I'll see you around. Good luck to you and everything that you do. Thank you.
And I do want to pass on comments from council member, former mayor Donna Anderson, who is absent tonight, but he wanted me to extend to you his well wishes and deep thanks for all you've done. He really admires your tenacity on the issues, your forthright pursuit of passion, of the issues that you're passionate about on behalf of the residents. And he really has appreciated your integrity and your willingness to dig in and be educated about the issues. So for all of these reasons, we're all going to miss you and thank you for your, your service. A bit short for our perspective. We prefer to have you a little longer, but thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Well, thank you. I tried to put together some remarks and I gave up. So I, I thought I would just speak a little extemporaneously. This council and the three years that I've spent with you guys have been truly amazing. I thought that I could give a little something back to Lakewood based on my experience and my years here, but I didn't even begin to see what a collaborative group this was and how we could truly work together. And I wrote it recently that it's not always that you can, you can count your elected official colleagues as, as both respected friends and, and colleagues. Not all councils have what we have. This is a family. I remember when I lost my first race and then I, I sat down with each of you ahead of determining whether I should run in 2019. And you all to a T mentioned the fact that you are a family and that you, that you worked very closely together and that stuck with me. And I have found that to be true. We can all have differing opinions and differing perspectives, but we have the respect and we have the collegiate nature to, to work, work together. And that has been a learning experience. It's been a very gratifying experience. And darn it, I wish that I could serve out the last year of my term here, but I will be watching. And you can't get rid of me that easily because I do plan on coming back in my role and, and making sure that you're getting the return on investment for your funds at the auditor's office. And so I'm really excited. I'm still a resident here and, and will be in touch. And I know where all of you live, so.
Nice.
Very good. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you. And so we will now take a photograph, I think, as best we can around. I'm going to call it the horseshoe. I'm not going to call it the dais. It's kind of this weird sort of horseshoe thing. So Bryn will position us and then what we will do, ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a 10-minute recess for a little cake and refreshments there and celebrate Linda Farmer's tenure and to wish her well and her family well in the new adventure. And then we'll come back.
And I did completely overlook that my family is here tonight. My husband Jimmy and my daughter Dylan. I bribed them of cake perhaps.
Exactly.
I'm really, they, this is a family affair and I'm so glad to have them here tonight.
Yeah, there is room in the photograph, always. We're recess. There we go.
I'm just going to send you all the photos. I just don't, I'm not even adding them.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we are back on task. It's 7:27. We've taken a brief recess to celebrate the accomplishments and the service of council member Linda Farmer. And now we turn to tonight's items for discussion. The first of which is a review of the non-motorized plan survey results. And for this, we'll have our Public Works Engineering Services Manager, Weston Ott. Welcome, Weston. Mr. Ott?
Oh. I just realized tonight is the first time back in person in council chamber since COVID. And it's so nice to be back and sit across the table from you. So I did things like forget to turn on the, the microphone. So I'll begin again. So thank you, Mayor Whalen, Deputy Mayor Moss and members of the council. So what we're going to do this evening is just really objectively go through the survey results. This was part of the scope of work for the transpo group back in July. Their contract was awarded here at council. They worked with us to put this survey together and I'll go ahead and flip. I do have a PowerPoint presentation, so I'm on slide two. I hope everybody can see all right. So we put together, had the consultant put together a flyer and that flyer had a QR code. So it was just like what we did for the last two years during COVID. If we wanted a menu at a restaurant, we'd use our smartphone to get the QR code to get the menu to come up. So it was the same with the survey. You could simply use your phone. A number of the respondents did use phones. I could tell if it was an iPhone. I couldn't tell if it was an Android because it just shows up as Chrome. But a number of folks took it in different means, whether it was with their iPhone, iPad or Android. We had 205 responses to the survey in over three weeks. It was put out in three languages that you could choose at the beginning. We advertised it heavily, city manager's bulletin, social media. I saw it reposted on Facebook myself multiple times. And then we went to a number of different clubs, those that expressed interest. I went to the Parks Board. Even at my American Lake Management Board meeting, I brought up the survey at the very end. So we really tried every avenue we could to get 205 responses. So again, we're just going to go through these this evening. I will, I have one caveat that there was a free form question at the end. I don't have those summarized tonight. We're still working through the free formed comments. There was 93 of the 205 surveys gave us a comment. As you can imagine, they're quite varied from thank you to things not pertaining to transportation. So we'll go ahead and start with where do folks live or the respondents, what do they do in Lakewood is a better way to word this. So the majority of respondents live in Lakewood, but then work, go to school and shop. So a pretty good coverage. As you can see, it's both in percentage and in numbers. So nearly all the respondents were folks that lived in Lakewood. And I'll take care of the demographics upfront. The consultant helped us with the format for that and you can see the numbers there. To summarize that up, there was about 20% of the respondents that were non-white and the balance were 80% were white. And that is a difference from what our demographics is for our city. The city is currently 58% white. But again, this is a small survey and it also doesn't parse this based on age and the demographic result. I do have age on the next slide. So you can see age here and again, with age, my vision is not as good as it used to be. So I'm going to switch back and forth with glasses. But you'll see on the left side of the graphic that above age 50, if you take the total number of surveyed, those surveyed, it works out to 68.8%. But for Lakewood, if you look at our census data, it's 34%. So again, there's a couple nuances here, but again, we have 205 responses out of our 63,000 residents. And then same with gender. Gender typically is a 50/50 for most cities and there's a slightly higher for the respondents. But again, small survey. So getting into the questions. This one here on walking, I think, is really telling. If you look on the left side, the first three bars, from every day to twice a week to once a week, you take in a good percentage of those that responding, responding. Of course, I didn't add that, or did I add it up? I did. So it's just right about 80% of folks walk once a week or more often. So that tells us what the demand is for our non-motorized uses, again, for those that responded. It's a pretty small percentage for those that don't use the non-motorized facilities. So again, I'm going to flip through these slides. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to stop as we go through. So the next one is bicycling. You see, there's a little bit of a difference. But I was surprised, there still is a fair amount of folks that bicycle more than once a week. It works out to 37%. So if I take the first three bars, that sums up to 37%, so still quite a bit. Next slide here we have is the other uses. You know, e-bikes, there is a fair amount of use. That's a fairly new technology and it's expensive. Those are, you know, can be north of $4,000 for an e-bike or, or more. You'll see my note up there, a basic e-bike, if you Google it, is 1,000 to 4,000. But I know my neighbors in Oak Brook that e-bike all the time. It took them months to get the e-bike during COVID and they definitely paid more than that. But it's, they are gaining in popularity. So it was a good. It was good to add these questions. Scooters, mobility chairs or mobility devices and skateboards. Again, all about that same, that kind of 90% range that don't use it, but some folks do. So it, it'll be in the future, looking at our non-motorized facilities and which facilities do these use? Because your wheelchair, it's going to use the same facility that the person walking would be. The skateboard and the scooter is going to be somewhat of a combination. And then the e-bike would be appropriate for what bicycles would use, unless the e-bike is moving at a much greater rate, more like a motorized vehicle. So these questions here, I was afraid they might blend in a little bit into that background. But what I want to point out is the first three bars for using active transportation or our non-motorized facilities. What I see there is, you know, improving my health, getting outdoors, improving the quality of my life. That's, those are all two-thirds or more for each one of those responses. And that speaks well of Lakewood, that folks feel safe and confident to use our, what we have available for those, those uses. And then after that, you have this next three are things like to get to a specific destination or save some money or reduce fuel. And that's what, in my mind, is an alternate to using a vehicle. And then after that, there, it reduces fairly quickly. Transit's still in there at fifteen percent, but we know transit's fairly well-used here in Lakewood. So the next one is where do you go, basically, when you use this? So again, it's not surprising if it's for exercise and being outdoors that the top response would be parks, trails, natural settings, and having Fort Silicon Park a gem in our city, as well as other parks. It's not surprising. And then after that is your business and shopping, your, your friends, restaurant or coffee. That's a fairly high number. It's over a third for each one of those by themselves. So almost two-thirds if you sum up those three. So that means people in Lakewood are getting out and about to, whether it's to a friend or to a business to do shopping. And I've seen that myself where I live in Oak Brook. There's more folks that will, because of sidewalks there, will walk up to the safe way to do their shopping or get their coffee at Dutch Bros or somewhere. Flip here. So this was an interesting question for those taking the survey is how far are you going? What's your typical distance? And I was surprised that two-thirds of the walkers are going one to five miles. But again, if you, if you lay, overlay that on what people are doing, which is exercising, getting out, quality of life, then that makes sense that you're gonna get out and take a fairly long walk. But fourteen percent are a mile or less. So I don't know where those shopping and doing other things in Lakewood would fall in that group. But that's a, that's a pretty good distance to walk, one to five miles. Even in the transit industry, they talk about the first mile and the last mile, really getting people to go that first and last mile to get from their home to transit. But here we have, you know, two-thirds of those walking would go that distance again, but it's based on those responding. The bicycle, which is right next to it, that's not surprising that that's a longer distance. You know, one to five miles, all the way up to ten or over ten. Again, those are your commuters or those that go on a bicycle a longer distance. On this slide, I have to apologize, skateboards came up twice. So it's not a pitch for skateboards. Yeah, and, and again, skateboards, if you look at them, over ten miles on a skateboard, one percent. So there are some people out there that are very dedicated. Yeah, they're definitely not. Anyhow, I'll just leave it at that. But the e-bikes, again, it kind of matches the use of it. There's a fair number of folks that are using the e-bikes as that's an emergency, emerging technology, and those distances are pretty good, the five to ten and over ten miles at sixteen percent. That's a, a pretty good percentage for something that's emerging. And then on your wheelchair and mobility scooter, I'm not surprised that it's a mile or less or one to five miles. Often, that's either what I see personally is those that are using the sidewalk that live in, like an assisted living, or those that are trying to get to transit was what I would see typically. And you're gonna have a shorter distance for that, to physically go that far in a wheelchair or mobility scooters asking quite a bit. Again, the slides are a little bit hard to see here. So what's interesting is this slide's kind of cut up in a little both, the, the legend on the bottom is essential, is that kind of royal blue color. And so you can see, make it safer and easier to walk is the lion's share of the responses. And that kind of matches with what we saw for uses of our non-motorized facility. But the bicycles, it's the same. It's still very important and connecting to transit. So those are the, the needs, and I think it really matches with what the council has been doing over the last while, is putting that, that investment into our infrastructure. And that, that investment in the road also includes sidewalks and bike facilities quite often. So again, what you're doing is matching what the respondents are asking for. So these are the, the top three things that would help using the non-motorized more often. So new or better sidewalks. Yeah, more, more is better, right? More trails, and, and this one makes sense when you have Fort Silicon Park, and you can walk around the park, and you have a choice of trails, whether it's paved or unpaved. It's really easy to see why you would want more trails. However, again, it has a legend, it's kind of in that top right. If you look at the sidewalks, their first choice is it's over half of the respondents, the first choice are sidewalks. So while sidewalks are definitely the largest column there, it also was the first choice by, by most respondents. And the, the last one, additional streetlights. The only reason I bring that up is the city's done a great job on lighting the city and made a very concerted effort, and the majority of the city is lit. So it doesn't surprise me that for the first choice, that lighting is such a small amount of that, that bar, even though that bar is roughly the same size as some of the other responses in between. It is a fairly small one, which I think reflects what's occurred in the city. So this one's a pretty busy graphic. I do have it cut out in the next slide. But so again, with that request for more sidewalks, it has a legend on the left side, the bright red bars needs improvement. So the first one is connectivity, and the second one is sidewalks. And I have a separate slide for that, and we can flip back and forth. But it seems to be the same message that we've seen throughout the survey, the request for more sidewalks, and then also the connectivity. And that's really been the focus in the last five, six years, is looking at our infrastructure that we've planned and proposed to build, and making sure that makes logical connections throughout the city, takes, takes out gaps in both our transportation and our non-motorized. The next one is fair. So what's interesting, I found, was the second one sidewalks, that the fair bar is fairly large. So I think that reflects what we have, we have built. And some of the written responses, people were thankful for what the city has built. And it really is starting to show. I know it was two, three years ago, the city, if you look at the mileage of road, we were only about twenty percent sidewalks. I'm not sure where we're at now, but we're, we're definitely making improvements. When using the non-motorized facilities, you know, how important are the following to, to the, the person taking the survey? And again, there's a big laundry list on the left side. I took the, the top five and put them on the right, and it's not surprising that it's sidewalks. So sidewalks and then separation from vehicles. And that's often the challenge with bike lanes is, you know, we used to build sharrows, which you could ride in the lane, and then we had the five-foot bike lane between the sidewalk and the lane. Kind of the, the trend is heading towards, they call it any age, any ability. But often, that takes up more than a lane to travel. So, you know, that right-of-way has to come from somewhere. Either we take out a road, literally take out a lane to make that happen, or by right-of-way, or the facility has that right-of-way. And that's just a, a challenge for some of our capital projects. So again, just a quick summary here, more sidewalks, connectivity. Respondents primarily walk, which makes sense. That's a you know, doesn't require additional purchase of any non-motorized use. Things like bicycles or e-bikes are expensive. And again, the non-motorized use in the city is for recreation. But like I mentioned here, if we're looking at those slides earlier, we do have a fair amount there, shopping, going to work, and connecting to transit. So here's kind of the schedule to get done. So again, the report was done in two thousand nine, and we have, we've started on updating the report, working with transpo group. They are gonna have us a draft after the first of the year. We asked them to give us a little bit of time to review it and make comments. So then in February, they would be making those final updates. So sometime mid-February, we would have the final plan submitted to Public Works. And then at that point, it could be posted to the website and shared. So with that, put a slide of some of our recent projects in there, show our efforts towards non-motorized uses in the city. And if there's any questions, I can answer.
Go back to the prior slide real quick. This one?
Yep.
The only thing I didn't see in there, but I assume it's probably implicit, is staff review of non-motorized plan with city council. I assume we're, we're plugged in there somewhere.
That's a, that's a great question. So some of my question to you from a staff standpoint is, would you like us to come back in a study session? Or what, what vehicle would you like to see that?
I think we'd like to see the update in a study session, for sure. Because we want to kind of get a sense of, you know, based on the survey results or otherwise, what staff believes the next connectivity priorities might be. And we may agree, we may not, but we want to try to have a chance to look at it.
Okay.
Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, and at some point, doesn't have to go to the planning commission too, is that?
I'm not sure on the have to go to planning commission, but there's no reason it couldn't.
Yeah, I think you, last time when I was on the planning commission, when this thing first came out, and that was probably nineteen, when did we do the last one, nineteen? There was like two thousand.
Yeah, there were exactly one or two.
Whatever it was, but I was on the planning commission at the time. And we spent a fair amount of time going over the public input and looking at it and noodling over it, and really trying to, to make some qualitative assessments about connectivity. And that was really the first working document the city had ever done on that. And it was, it was a good product. And now we've done a lot of work, of course, in the last, what's, ten, twelve, whatever years it's been.
Right.
So it'd be nice to kind of revisit that. But there are some, we've made huge progress, but there's still some gaps in connectivity, especially with neighborhoods into the town center or two parks and that kind of a thing. So, you know, lots of great progress, but certainly good focused progress to come.
Okay. Yeah, all right. Well, I'll work with the city manager on when we should come back to council and the planning commission.
Well, thank you for doing the work, and you know, it's kind of nice to see. Did you have a question, Mr. Branstad? It's nice to see that the survey results were in greater in scope and breadth and depth than the one on the entire resident survey of the city of Lakewood. But, you know, there you go. Mr. Branstad.
Well, I mean, thank you for the presentation. That and I'm, I'm glad we've at least gotten to this point. I think this is a point where we would hope to have been two years ago, when, when we really realized the need that we needed to be planning our non-motorized improvements according to a plan, in that the one we had was outdated to be able to go and do that. So I think that we, you know, want to go through to do that. I guess candidly, I would say that I'm not thrilled with the survey. That we as a council were looking to try to do away with things that systemically exclude portions of our community from being involved in, in, in influencing policy decisions to be able to go and do that. And this survey, like past surveys from a variety of consultants, has just opted for the easiest sort of outreach process to do by putting together an online survey and advertising it and telling a lot of people that it's there and being able to go and do that. And every time, we're surprised that the vast majority are middle-aged or older Caucasian folks that reply. And we accept the excuse that, well, the other people had, had an opportunity, but they didn't do that, and discard the fact that we're probably not using a holistic methodology that attracts everyone. You know, I see that, you know, and I see that time again. And while it's hard, it doesn't have to be that way, because I can think of some public outreach efforts that we have made, particularly when we were surveying about parks improvements, or where we use a very different method to survey around what should be the design in Oak Brook of the sidewalks along Onyx, where we, you know, we, we use something that was, you know, where, where we reached out and conversed with people rather than just did this. So I'm, I don't know what the one thing of where people could submit something, because you, you told us there was another question that where people could, we're still collating all the answers, where people could write something down to be able to go and do that. The survey, I'm not surprised that the survey said that people really, you know, when they think about non-motorized transportation, what they, and, and they, they come combining, being able to do it in safety, bring sidewalks to the top of the, the top of the list. But I don't understand how, based on this survey, transpo is going to write us a plan to consider. How are they gonna decide where do people in the community think the priority for sidewalks is? And it's, it's not so much that there's a community priority of where they should be. It, it's more a question of different neighborhood priorities, about where do they want sidewalks? And it doesn't look like we asked that. You know, in, in your neighborhood, where would, where should the priority for sidewalks be? And to me, that's a question that I need to go. I talked to a number of folks, the presidents of a couple of neighborhood associations, and they recalled receiving something that said, there's a survey, encourage people to take it. But they didn't, no one went to a neighborhood association and asked questions. In this neighborhood, what do you need, what do you want to do to be able to go and do that? And I am thinking before we finalize that, we need to do some element of that to see where it is. I guess the other thing that I, that I guess that I would tell you is that in talking with people in the community, the concept of connectivity is different than perhaps the engineering concept of connectivity of something that goes from A to B. That a lot of folks that I talk to about sidewalks and things to do Um, that, uh, a lot of folks that I talk to about sidewalks and things to do that. They're not looking at connectivity that way. They look at connectivity more like. A watershed. They're in their neighborhood and all the streets come together and then they want to get to something that then takes them somewhere. And then the reverse is, is, is true, but it isn't to go from a major A to a major B to be able to go and do that. Uh, we think when we were having discussions and we had this distinction before. It was one of the things that where we as a console had to. Upgrade the priority and even the existence of the project for. Mount Tahoma Drive to come into the downtown to be able to go and do that. Um, and we, we do use that, the concept of that. Not so much A to B, but uh, get to be, uh, in a, in our Safe Route to Cities. Sidewalk program that has driven a lot of the sidewalks that we've had so, so far. So, uh. I'm interested in seeing. What the comments were and I'm. Not quite ready to, to, to say that this timeline is going to be exactly what we want to do because I don't know that. Transpo by this survey has really gotten a good sense of what. Folks in our community and particularly in specific neighborhoods really want to see us to prioritize. We may have to do a little bit of looking at that, but what they come up with will certainly be a starting point. For us to be able to, to, to finalize a plan. I, I, I'm. Middle of February seems ambitious to me for that unless. The plan is surprising.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're tied into that necessarily. I think it's just an update. You know, I would echo some comments in part. I think the survey is always good to get some data. I think it was a fait accompli. To come to the conclusion that the outcome is, you know. More and better. And I think all of us want that. So whether it was a, a survey that dug into. The deep reaches of every different neighborhood, I think the outcome on the survey would have been the same, that the priority is sidewalks. Uh, and so we know that. But I think the real question is, uh, in this next round of planning, it's the where. You know, and it's the, and, and it's the who that is connected and where. We all know that we want to be connected and it makes good sense to do it. So hopefully transport group will do a little bit of that work as well when they come back. With regard to the analysis and, and then we'll have a product to look at and have a study session as a council. All right, so. And it may not be February. I get it. So when we come back tentatively sometime in February. Um, there could be direction from the council to do something different for public outreach is what I'm hearing.
Well, I think that, as I'm reading between the tea leaves, um. You know, I think we want to have a focus on equity. Throughout the city and we don't know, looking at the survey, whether that. Hits us over the head very well with that, with, you know, eighty-five percent of the respondents being. Middle-aged white females. And there probably is an opportunity to get a wider net of respondents. On the needs that they think they have in their respective neighborhoods. And there are a lot of other areas that probably. Represent a demographic different than what the survey represents.
Okay. All right. Well, we'll have something for you in February to go over at a study session.
Yeah. Yeah, but it's always going to be the case that we're going to focus on the major and minor arterials and collectors, right? First. I mean, that's. It's the obvious. And we, we've. Deviated a little bit of that based on what we have perceived to be connectivity gaps. In the last rounds, I think we've been fairly successful at that. So it's just a matter of really kind of driving. At home and making sure that the spine and the spikes are done as well as we can do it. And provides, you know, sort of an equitable approach to. Connectivity throughout the city. Anything else? Or am I misstating? The sort of thought on council here?
I, I think you're spot on. Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I would encourage you to reach out to other community groups, maybe engage the schools. Um, places like YMCA, they, they really help. Um, also faith-based organizations that are in the different areas. Uh, that could also get the word out into, that might help in expanding the reach. Of uh, getting a, the diverse survey results.
All right. Be that as it may, thank you for all the good work. I mean, it's great to see you, August. Yep. It's nice to have some connectivity ourselves.
Yes, exactly. Yeah. Well, thank you very much and Merry Christmas.
You too. Yep. Thank you. Next, we'll review the thirty percent design for Angle and Elwood Eighty-seventh Project and Hipkins Project. With our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Busic. And we've been promised some charts and darts this time by here, right? I love the one pager that was in the council packet.
You like the one pager?
That's all I got. I didn't get any pictures. I like.
No, if we gave you everything in the council packet, you'd have no reason to show up tonight.
Not a bad.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't. So we're going to take just a couple of minutes. We need to rearrange a couple of things here in the room. As we've done, we did prior to COVID.
Right.
We, uh, created a long plot for you of the project. Going to walk you through where we are on two separate projects, so they're connected. And we're going to talk to you about some of the, uh, design aspects of the project and get your feedback on those.
Great.
Uh, we're at thirty percent, plenty of time to make changes, plenty of time to make decisions.
Got it.
As well as that, our intention is to be under construction this summer. Which means that we are looking to have everything ready to go out to bid in March.
Great.
So hopefully, uh, we'll be able to answer all your questions tonight.
The board in a few minutes or what?
We will. In just a couple of minutes, we're going to drag those tables over here and get things set up.
Right.
I also want to point out that with me tonight is not only Ted Hiller, our capital programs manager, but on the screen up there is Troy Pockswinski.
Hey Troy.
Troy would have been joining us in person. Unfortunately, he had a bit of a mishap this weekend, so he's not able to drive around much. But he did. Agree to be here tonight to answer any of the more nuanced questions you might have on the design. So if you'll give us just a minute, we'll get set up.
Of course, you got our curiosity up now.
I just fell, tripped over a hose. It's all happened. Not riding the knee bike, unfortunately.
All right. Yeah. I'm going to get up and get a cup of coffee. Feel free to do so. We'll kind of come to the table, so to speak, once Mr. Busic gets it set up. So much work still to do tonight. Work, work.
Lights will be in the road. Art of lighting.
Voice covering.
All right, so. We have two projects and we're advertising them. As one contract because of the intense coordination that has to occur. So the most important thing about the.
I love this.
Elwood Angle Eighty-seventh Street Project. It's the concept of adding the new roundabout at the park entrance. Um, we've worked with Mary and her team to look at how we can make this, so. It's not just a roundabout, but also shapes how traffic comes into and out of the park itself. So you'll see that we've swept, swooped, I guess, swept. Communication matter, experts. Uh, we've swept the approach into the park. So, and we've also made that going into the ball field will be a, uh, a stop. Now, the exact location of this, don't get too worried about that. We're still thirty percent design, this is the concept here. But it allows people to stop and get out into and then get into the ball field safely. And then as they come in, think about Summerfest where we had to shut down the exit. Because it couldn't have the conflicting movements because of the odd shape, shape off of Elwood and Dresden coming in. So this now makes it accessible. People can get in and they can get out safely. Um, there's a couple of features about this. The original plan was to build sidewalk on the east side of Eighty-seventh. Connect across and then run a shared use path all the way down to Angle and then sidewalk on one side of Angle. As we looked at this and, and we discussed it, we said, this is a perfect opportunity to spend a little extra money. Put in the roundabout entrance has been talked about for fifteen years. To improve this, also to take the time and finish the sidewalks on the west side. So that's all completed and done. Um, you'll see right here, because we're going to be shutting down the access to the park for five weeks. We've looked at how else can we get people in and out of the park? We have an access off of Angle. And we have these temporary entrance points, which we're going to pave as part of this project. So they can be used for the bigger Summerfest and other types of events. The problem. Yeah. No. The plan is, that's why, that's why the timing on this project is so important. Have to get it out in March, because we want this to vary the first action that the contractor does. Get this done before Summerfest.
Right.
So it's accessible. When we do this though, for that period of time, getting people in and out of the park is going to be a real problem. They get hundreds of people go through there every day. So what we're looking at is a potential temporary construction access off of Eighty-seventh. That would be taken out after the project was, was no longer necessary to have that and restored. Um, we'd be looking at the possibility of using these temporary access points. This one's going to be here, uh, hard by Dalton because it's going to be actively under construction. So if we build this down here in Eighty-seventh. Um, and all this is shut down, basically there's no conflicting traffic movement, people fighting to get on to Eighty-seventh and the Silicon Boulevard. We looked at. At Circle Drive, there is, uh, there's an intersection there, but it's only set up for three legs of traffic. And we talked about bringing in a temporary traffic signal and then trying to rewire it in. Part of the challenge is there, there's no safe left turn pocket to get. Into the park and we'd have to do a significant amount of reconfiguration. It's not off the table. But right now it does not look like it's the most cost-effective means of getting people in and out for five weeks. So the question is, when we have the roundabout here closed at the park entrance. Silicon Boulevard will not be impacted at all. Everybody on Silicon Boulevard, who wants to go to the neighborhood here will have to go down Hipkins. Which is why it's so important we issue this as one contract. It's a big contract, so the contractor can manage that. When they first start, this will be their first order of business is building this roundabout. It's going to be great. The other thing is, is, um, Hipkins, we're partnering with the Liquid Water District. They want to replace the water line in there. The delivery on their materials months out. So the contractor will order all that material. Will be able to use Hipkins for our detour routing. Um, until this is completed. When that's all done, a little less of a problem. We would want the contractor up here working on the shared use path all the way down to Angle. Again, outside of the traveled way, well away from cars, not a problem. They can do this very easily. So along with this is we do have one property owner right between Dresden and Dalton that has an access. They're the only one. Um, and then. To the north side of Dresden, this is a currently a loop that will become just a, a dead end loop. In, out, they have their own access in, into and out of the roundabout. And then one property owner has a access driveway right here.
Do you have any right of way you have to take?
We do not have any right of way we need to take.
Great.
Surprisingly enough, the right of way for Elwood is all the way out to here.
Oh wow. Have you talked to them?
Um, these folks here access right off of here.
This access here.
No, we have not talked to anybody about this yet.
This road will go away.
This road will go away.
Yeah.
And what you see there in green. We will need to tear the road surface out and we would look to restore it with plantings.
Are you thinking about what's happening inside of there?
It's going to be.
It's lit. It's green.
I'm going to put a water feature there. I'm going to take a hose and stick it up in there.
I like them.
What?
We'll deal with that. Okay. Um, actually, it's, it's a good question. What's in the middle?
We want to put something in there.
Whatever. You guys want to put in there that we want to do. I expected, I expected there will be something here you'll want related to.
Yes.
Signage or something, but. There are lots of homes that have attractive landscape uplighting that aren't glaring.
You can make it really.
So. This actually is quite the, the gardens here are really quite mature.
Access for lighting or something. Our power or something.
We're going to put power and water to the center here.
Yeah, yeah.
But as part of this project. By March, unless someone comes up an idea, we would probably put in like zero escaping.
Isn't that a part of the stuff parks started looking at with?
Yeah, that'd be a great spot for them to sign.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's right now, the, the idea is, is that the roundabout's beautiful, but it's like now we have this new ball field that's going to be sitting like that. So the idea is not, right now you stop there and you're staring at it. And this is the only little wayfinding. It's really wayfinding is a challenge in the park.
Yeah, yeah.
So this is to sweep them into the park and maybe take a look at how we can do the wayfinding once we get them in the park. Because they know they're going the ball fields, but, uh, you know, where's the pavilion? Where's the barn going to be? Where's dog park?
Frankly, yeah, you could have wayfinding, a nice wayfinding sign there and something here that's attractive.
Yeah, and that, that's all down the pipe. We are working this.
So. This road here. This will be a stop sign.
There will be a stop.
Right.
That. This shows lane marking that there. Want to be lane marking here?
Can be. It's a driveway. It's, we're, we're not proposing to take out the center island.
I, I, I think though, the, the long term is, it's, it's the entryway to this. Here's solid. Stadium. To be able to go and do that. But you are going to remove that narrow median. That, that, that's down the center of.
I wonder if you could do a one way this way and one way this way. Keep it safer.
Well, you know, maybe. Then, then, then this would have to be not temporary. You have to have some traffic control.
That could be a right in, right out. So that during the nighttime, the rest of the park is shut off. Cars be able to come in and then go out and then they return right only. So there's no conflict. Then they use a roundabout to go out. But that would be a permanent feature out there then.
Think about how you get all those people.
Right.
Well, honestly, at two hundred and some people there, I mean, we have. Hundreds and hundreds that are coming through all the time. And there's, yeah, the parking lot.
This should be plenty then. Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thousands of people coming in and out of there every day without blink. So, you know.
The problem I see is people coming out here, this is always a little bit narrow. You know, you got people coming in and then people kind of going out and crossing over is people, you know. That could be kind of interesting.
If there's any nighttime events going on there and the rest of the park is closed. Um, the intention is to put a gate in this vicinity here. That blocks them so they can't go into the general park and everybody else will be flushed out. So that there's a gate here, the gate here and a gate here. So that nighttime activities, they can go in and out. There's no conflict. And then once they're all done, this gate's already closed. These two gates will be closed. No one can get into the park.
At the other end. What's that rake in the mixed use path?
That is actually where Angle Lane already is. And so there's already asphalt there. That's actually the access.
That's the actual access to the park?
Yeah, it's already gated off.
Is there a new ten foot or whatever?
This is a fourteen foot wide shared use path. That right now, we already know we're going to do a little more, um, curvature down to ninety seconds. And then through this portion from ninety second down to Angle. We have all the survey and all the trees and we paid particular attention to making sure that it was a constructible path. That impacted the least number of trees possible. That is fourteen foot wide. You don't, you don't really need to mark that, Councilor Branson, because the gate is down here. And there'll be a signage on one side, shared use path, so people can get to it. They'll also walk along here to get to the dog park, which is separated from the shared use path.
So this doesn't show the park?
No, it's, it's no one. What we do, what we have installed as far as the traffic flow goes. There will be one raised. Um, speed table for a crosswalk. But the other two crosswalks will not have a raised crossing sign. And so along Elwood, we're looking at three discrete points where people can walk across. And we get down here around ninety fifth, conceptually, we still need to find a way to get into the shared use path. Cause we don't have a, a construction entrance or, um, entrance into it.
This is where the other.
Right here, yeah. Angle has.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
So as, as we're moving down angle. Things, this is where things get a little bit simpler. We already have the asphalt that's in the entrance and is gated off. So people coming off of here will now, as you see, this is where you need to go for the rest of the bicycling and, and head. We are not putting in a bike lane here. We're just, because it's a low traffic road and low speed. They will come off of this and they'll get back on and just ride along the side or use the sidewalk. Um, we are, now we're going to. Yep, there is a sidewalk on the south side of Angle.
You. We don't need right of way on Angle.
We do not need right of way on Angle. We do not need right of way in any of this portion of it. That line, right here.
Go out of all this, we're only taking out twelve trees. Yeah, we really. Yeah, you know, it looks attractive.
So we're ready to move on down Angle. I don't want anybody to lose anybody. So moving down Angle, one of the.
Yeah, we're doing some legislative history here and there's a couple of conversations going on. So you've got to stagger it up. I'm sorry, but I'm.
Go ahead.
Thank you, City Attorney. Um, so moving along on Angle, one of the comments we've heard a lot about is. Crossings right here by the dog park. Well, sight distance, there's not a great place to have people cross. So we are including a couple of more sidewalks though on Angle after Elwood. One's down by on Elwood, round ninety fifth. Yeah, your, your dog park is there. And then, um, there's a radar feedback sign on Angle after Elwood. That shortly after that, we intend on putting a crosswalk, which right now just conceptually shows that just away from Woodlawn. We're still looking to see if we can move that closer. One of the important features, uh, where we tying into Hipkins, so I want to go over with you. Everything you see here, which is the crosshatch, that's existing sidewalk and the existing planter beds. That's from a hundred and fourth to just, um, north of Angle Lane. We don't intend on taking out the sidewalk. Maybe refresh the plantings and the irrigation. But the important thing here is for us is that when you're on Hipkins, you have sidewalks on both sides of the road. So when you come around the corner on Hipkins onto Angle Lane, we need to safely be able to get pedestrians and cyclists across to the other side. Specifically pedestrians to the sidewalk. Um, crossing right here at Angle, it's kind of a strange intersection.
Yes.
And people don't really pay attention. You've got someone coming down Hipkins who want to whip left real fast to beat traffic. And those coming out want to zip across real fast to beat traffic. So instead, what we've decided to do is we're going to extend the sidewalk a little further on Angle on the opposite side. And put in a, uh, a raised crosswalk. The race, thank you. The race crosswalk at this location is, um. Not going to be a hazard because people are already slowing down to get to. The stop sign. In fact, we want they use that as an opportunity to remind people to slow down. You do actually have a stop sign coming up. And people coming on to Angle from Hipkins will be slowing down to, uh. The speed tables there. This will also be a rectangular flashing beacon. So if someone pushes the button, they got all the lights flashing at them. And so they know that this is not right at the intersection. This one's further down. It is, it is not a raised sidewalk there. We only have two raised sidewalks proposed right now, one here and the other one further down around ninety second on Elwood. And then once we get to, to Hipkins, it's a pretty straightforward project, um, curb gutter sidewalk standard. Till you get to North Way. Now, I was talking to. Councilor Bokey earlier and about people's speed down here. And so we are taking out some of the older chicanes. They really don't work very well. People just go through them. And yeah, we will not admit who does that, but everybody does. Um, so the concept here is. The only place we can put anything to slow them down effectively is a roundabout and it's at North Way. Um, that was not a part of the original cost estimate, however, based on where we are now. For the funding we have on Hipkins, we have sufficient funds to cover the installation of roundabout. We have a couple of different sizes. We would need to acquire some right of way from the four corner property owners. I think it's. Troy, how many, uh, square feet do we need in total around that corner?
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred square feet amongst four property owners. So it's not a tremendous amount. However, that, that roundabout's the same size as what we have out in front of City Hall, Troy. Correct?
That's correct.
We can reduce the size of that to reduce the amount of the actual tape. Um, what I keep reminding Troy, is he's been the one designing the roundabouts for the most part. Really small roundabouts don't work. People drive over them. Um, and they have to be sufficient sized tongue in cheek so that when I drive through with my pickup truck and my fifth wheel, I'm not riding over top of it. It's just some, yes, they're all, this is not a corridor for semis. Um, but the fire trucks, the garbage trucks, delivery trucks have to be able to get around that safely.
So is a roundabout the only option for slowing people down?
Effectively. Um, radar feedback signs remind honest people to be honest. And so they do work to a degree. They'll drop a couple of miles an hour on the average speeds. The raised speed tables work. Uh, but you really don't want to use them in a speed zone more than about twenty-five miles an hour because they actually become a hazard, right? And then we know chicanes don't work. And so we really come down to, if you want a permanent effective mechanism of slowing people down, you put in something that's going to slow them down around.
Keep the signs smart to kind of accommodate. The traffic and also to make it, um. Usable as a speed, uh, uh, reducing device, you know, the little speed homes on Deco and don't do it.
Would it be a, a roundabout like the ones over at American?
It'd be like City Hall. It's be a City Hall size, yeah.
I think in this case it's big enough where we have room where we could put some landscaping feature, some form in it. And, uh, yeah, because this one obviously does. The reason why we couldn't do that on two of them veterans, we didn't have enough room. And in some cases, uh, we know that the VA hospital has really large, uh, deliveries to it and the buses. And yeah, we, we just couldn't. Didn't have the space to make it big enough. Here we stop. It is an add to the project and Troy can go over those costs and we'll worry those costs in a little bit. Some of the other questions on this project we have through the council is roundabout or no roundabout? Recommend a roundabout. Landscaping, how do we do the landscaping, um? On both the veterans and Washington, listening to council. About maintaining something that's effective long term. It's not going to cost us an arm and a leg to keep it up, looking really good. We went with a blended option where we have the black concrete. And also landscape. When we originally costed this project out, we did not account for that. Because it's going to be curb gutter sidewalk right up next to it. We've taken a look at the budget. We have room for it. So we would like to recommend having a three foot buffer in there. From where the backside of the curb is and where the sidewalk really begins. So that it's more of a separation. Um, that we have a cost for that. That includes landscaping for trees and small shrubberies at the cross streets. Around the roundabout like we did before with the big, bigger trees. But in between, we would have the dark concrete that makes it a definitive. We are also going to be looking at, we're, we're proposing to put in, of course, the cluster mailboxes. And we'll be looking as we go through this and further in the design, how to create those bump outs like we did on veterans. We didn't need those on Washington Boulevard because that is a main corridor route for bicyclists. And we have bike lanes. So we have a twelve foot path. We have a, a bike lane. So we have plenty of room for the delivery. Uh, of the mail to get to those, um, cluster mailboxes. Here we won't have that. So we were looking to take an approach similar to what we've done on veterans.
So. Hipkins right now does have some landscaped median, right in the middle of the street. This is not going to have any of it, right?
That, yes, that would come out. Cause those are part of the chicanes.
Right. At least you got this traffic calming mechanism here. Yeah. Good.
We'd still like to put in a couple of radar feedback signs. Um, because like I said, they keep the honest people honest. But the biggest deterrent to people coming in here and doing sixty miles an hour is going to be that roundabout.
I have a question. Are these? Sidewalks or shared use?
Driveways.
Oh, those are driveways.
Yeah, what you're seeing on there is actual the, the symbol for the driveway coming in and the sidewalk going around the backside of it.
Okay, um, I'm probably the only one here who will ad- admit to using Hipkins as a. Thoroughfare, uh, a way to get from point A to point B. This isn't a sleepy neighborhood anymore. This is a busy road. And so I, thank you. I, I am, I'm glad that there's a roundabout to try and slow people down because those chicanes do not work. Um, but I'm glad it's only one roundabout because this, this is a major way to get from one side of Liquid to another. And so. Um, I, I just, I don't see us trying to slow people down to twenty-five miles an hour down, down this road. I, I just, I just don't see that that's, that, that's not a modern take on today.
But. After, after the project with the roundabout in place, it's likely that I'll recommend the street line would be dropped to thirty, from thirty-five to thirty.
What, uh, what's your timing on?
As far as the design, um, same March, we need to have everything completed and advertised in March. And then the contractor will start, um, down at this end and work through. Troy, do you have a schedule, anticipated timeline for start to finish?
Yeah, that, the water main, you didn't mention, I don't believe the water main goes with this on Hipkins alone. Uh, the lead time for water materials is I believe five months now. Uh, so while they're doing the, uh, the Elwood and Angle area, then they would transition into the water main. It's probably going to be a winter build for Hipkins.
Yeah, thank you.
So. The, the water, the whole, the whole thing is going to get new water and so, so it's a big water project too. Okay. And we're going to bid that with them like.
Yes, like we have in the past. It'll be a, a joint project. They'll pay for all the components related to the water main replacement. Our advantage is they come in and do it right before with our contractor and then we don't have to deal with them tearing up our road for the next fifty years.
Is there any super infrastructure coming in to replace old or no?
Um, I'm not aware of any sewer, Troy. Have, have you contacted Pierce County Sewers?
The sewers know enough that they're not worried about any conveyance issues. They have out their capacity. They're, they're fine with that too.
PSC came through not that long ago, I think, down at that end. Let's, it wasn't, doesn't seem that long ago. It was probably ten years or more. And when they tore that up and at first they put down that lousy layer. Everyone was asking.
Any utilities that can be underground? It's down the first part of the park and.
There's always an opportunity to put utilities on the ground. It's very expensive and we would end up paying for it.
So when. That last stretch of Hipkins from Angle to a hundred and fourth. That. Uh. When, is there a period of time when that's going to be torn off because they're doing the water and putting it in? And then that section will be closed. And so what would be the detour? Plan when that particular two blocks essentially is closed?
Troy, did you hear the question?
I did. I heard the question and we're, we're, we're planning on including a staging plan in this set that goes out. Uh, we'll, we'll pitch a one way, one lane, one way street, kind of like what we did on the north end of Gravely. Uh, between Washington, the north end of Niantz, if you recall that, something that's similar will, will be what we'll do here.
So, so I could say it, it, there'd always be one lane open and we, we'd flag it with people alternating traffic that way.
I, I'm. Unfortunately with the water main, you can't really do that because the trench is so massive and it, it just destroys that part of the road that you can't. Open it up at night. So what we would do is one lane, one way for the duration while the water main construction's going on.
One lane, one way, not switching back and forth.
Okay.
And there's also a probability and possibility that depending on where the water line itself is. We may have to have rolling shutdowns of segments of this as they're building it. Similar to what we're doing on Washington Boulevard.
So then cross would become for the other direction, the detour around, I suppose, cross and what? What's Silicon?
So.
Like Silicon Drive.
This is, this is really early to be nailing anything down as far as detour routes go. Um, as we get further into the design and we figure out the sequencing, we want the contractor to follow. Keeping in mind that we also have to work with the contractor. It's part of their responsibility. Um, to detail where the detour routes are going to be as they're doing their work. We do know that we don't want them trying to. Detour people through the residential streets to get into the park if at all possible, which is why we're looking at that temporary construction access. Into the park during the course of construction, um, alleviating the pressure as much as we can on the residents who live in these neighborhoods over here.
And to go back to this one on the, on the path. That runs from. Angle and down to, uh. It's a Dresden. That's actually in the park.
So is it closed at night?
It's actually not in the park. It's in the right of way.
So people will think it's.
Correct.
We think it's in the park, but are we saying? The folks that need a place to be at night can't be along that path?
It's like the sidewalk along Silicon Boulevard. It's considered a sidewalk for that road. So you can walk down that sidewalk. You can walk along Silicon Boulevard at night. It's not supposed to be in the park, but you know.
And are we going to light it then? That was my question. Are we going to do some pedestrian scale lighting and not the big Cobras for that?
So that's a good question. We were talking about that. For that. For that area of the shared use path, which is closer to L wood, we'll be taking a look to determine if the existing street lighting is sufficient to shed, shed enough light during the nighttime so that it's a safe walking environment. When we get down here into the trees, we've been talking about looking at, seeing if we can connect to the street lighting and the power system in L wood and put in pedestrian level lighting along in here. Because we don't want from Angle Lane down to 94th to turn into a safety issue.
Why not consider having street lights on this side of L wood all the way down? And sufficient pedestrian scale lighting on the path side, intermixed so that you have maybe the Cobras that you normally would, the large ones on, what is this, the east side of L wood or whatever? And then you have pedestrian scale lighting that's intermixed on the west side along the pathway. So it actually aesthetically looks good and gives sufficient lighting.
We already have all the lighting on L wood, that's already lit up at night, the street lights already exist.
Is it on the west side or east side?
It is on the east side where you are.
It's already over here.
Correct.
So we can add intermix where we need to, the pedestrian scale.
We are, exactly what we're looking at is what do we need to do to make sure that this pathway through here is sufficiently lit up? Pedestrian scale.
Yeah, and even down from here down, it doesn't have to be same configuration, but spaced out enough so it at least has a light at.
That's, that's part of the next evaluation.
Those are their pedestrian scale going down toward Huttloff, for example. For whatever reason, we use pedestrian scale lighting on that street and out the Cobras, which is funky, but you know, it's, it's a better size for people who walk.
So I was going to ask a dumb question, what does pedestrian scale lighting look like? Give me an example, okay.
Much shorter, doesn't have as broad of a span of what it lights up.
Right, that way it's better for the neighborhood, frankly, around here to have it across the street. Yeah, soft lighting that looks good.
Yeah, we definitely don't want to overlight.
Yeah, you've been reading our minds because that's what we're looking at.
See, I like lights because if you come to my house now, it looks like Hollywood and Vine, you know, out there, so it's bing.
I must, must remind you that Lakewood does have a lighting plan, so we want to keep our dark skies.
So that is the overview of the two projects slash one. And what I'd like to do is if you would like to take your seats again, then Troy has our cost estimate put together and I'm going to walk you through that. Or have Troy walk you through that so you can see where our costs are at and where we may have a shortfall. Beandering lighting and a water feature, got it.
Perfect, thank you Paul for running them through that, appreciate it. I'm going to run, yeah, I'm going to run you guys through the dollars and cents, well, there's not too many cents on this, but the dollars anyway. For Hipkins Road, the estimated cost for the baseline for what we were going to do was 2.75 million. The roundabout at Northway is an additional 300,000 and the landscaping, another 300,000. The total estimated cost with all the options is 3.35, do you guys see this okay?
Not yet, yep.
Is it not zoomed in here?
We're trying to get the smart board linked up again, give us just a second.
I see it here.
So what Troy was relaying is that for Hipkins, the baseline without the roundabout, without the landscaping and the colored concrete, the black concrete, we're at 2.75, we have originally estimated 3.6 million. So cost effective, but that means that we have the opportunity to put in the roundabout, which would be another 300,000 at Northway. And then another 300,000 our estimate for doing the landscaping and the dark concrete to make it more amenable. If we move forward with that, our cost estimate right now, engineering, design, construction, construction management, contingency, 3.35 million dollars. So we have some money there, about $290,000, we are not anticipating needing to complete the project with these add-ons. When you get into the Angle L wood 87th, Troy, I'm going to go ahead and read that if you don't mind.
Sure thing, absolutely.
Our baseline estimate, which is what we had originally pitched to the TIB, included is basically just the sidewalk on the east side of 87th. Crossing over Dresden, 14 foot wide shared use path all the way down through the L wood right of way. And then one sidewalk on the south side of Angle Lane. That would be the base and that's a little over $1 million, $1,075,000. The roundabout, hmm?
It's not too bad.
It's, it's not too bad and that does include the, we threw in a couple of extra access points and some, and some crossings too. But when we add the roundabout, that's another 600,000, because there's quite a bit of work there, including restoring the pavement going into the ball fields because it's in pretty bad shape as you come off the main draggo in there. That does include some extra features to it, that's another 600, so that's 1.675. When you look at how much we had authorized, we only had 900,000 is what we estimated. It would show that just for the Angle L wood, we have a $775,000 shortfall, however, you take into consideration the L wood, excuse me, the L wood, but the Hipkins Road project and the surplus we're anticipating on that. To do everything you saw tonight, we would need another $485,000 to do that. That's a 30% design, okay, it may, it may come down. Troy is very good at being conservative, so I would not expect anything to go up at this point. We have gone over this work with the city manager, if he was uncomfortable with it, I'm sure that he would have told us, don't present it. But he likes roundabouts too.
Got a question for you, I might help with that. You know, I know we all have seen the schematic for the Pierce College ball field at field number one in that location, it seems to me that part of that six point whatever million dollar project would have included or should have included contemplated road improvement into the park, might there not be an opportunity for some sharing of costs, given that it's all part of access to the ball field?
I would not be the person to ask that because I was not involved in any of that, knew nothing about it until Mary said, oh, by the way, we're going to have this 20 foot high screening, we need to kind of redirect things around.
Be worth asking. Even if you got 200 grand or 250 grand out of their budget, were that access improvements to their ball field in our park, it would be a good deal.
I think that'd be an outstanding idea.
Yep. Did you have a comment here?
The council will be looking at interlocal agreement, long-term management and use, and so you could have that conversation at that time, that'll be sometime in the first month of next year.
Well, they're, remind us what their construction plan is in terms of timing, do you remember?
We're submitting for permits right now, depending on what that timeframe is, the idea is to get started on that project as soon as we can. We'll be looking to avoid Summer Fest as the construction will be as well, but we'll be moving forward towards, it'll be done in 2024 probably. And it's quite.
Be before then, right, this roundabout is contemplated before Pierce County or Pierce College's ball field.
The intention is to have the roundabout completed before July 15, 2023.
Got it. Just a curious little question, and this may parlay into the reason to ask for some monies for the improvements because there's going to be impact to the road, all the construction activity to build out the ball field, I assume. That's an opportunity to make the ask.
I will say, the cost estimate for doing that, that small piece of the road surface was around $65,000. So it's, it's not hundreds of thousands of dollars to restore that part now. If part of this was to also pick up a new drive coming in, some of the sidewalk and all that, that would be, that would change the numbers, but not, not dramatically.
But the roundabout itself is a huge improvement for that entire thing, that's going to only benefit the college and citizens who come to visit the games and the whole thing, it's just, it's a win-win, I think on that.
They're, they're investing about $5 million into the site, so we could certainly ask for some additional resources to cover that or see how that impacts the project as we bring the final design and cost estimates forward.
Okay, great. That'll help pay for the yard.
So what I'm, what I'm sensing from the council is you like the features that we're proposing. The roundabouts are something we should continue to pursue. The landscaping and the separation of the sidewalk from, is on Hipkins, is still something you want us to continue moving down. Were there any other additional features that, other than a water feature?
Lighting, the pedestrian scale lighting on the pathway.
That is something that we are looking into already because that's dark in there in the trees. And even the, the street lights out on L wood, highly suspicious they would provide enough lighting to make it feel like it was safe to walk through there in the summer or winter time.
Walking through there, yeah. Fantastic project, any other questions or direction to public works? You know, very exciting to see that improvement, that's going to be a huge deal, I think. And then if we can coordinate the signage and all that, that'll be great. Wayfinding signage, here's your opportunity, all sorts of good stuff.
Thank you.
Yep.
Real quickly, I know it's only a 30% design, but it sounds like the, the project is on a fairly fast track. I just want to throw in a pitch for communicating as much as possible. And I don't know what we can do for signage, I, I know, I, I hear about folks who are still grumpy about, about some of the other long-term construction projects that are going on and they're having to go out of their way to get to work and out of their way to do this, that, or the other thing on. And I keep reminding them that it's all for a good cause, but, but this will, this will be yet another thing and yes, it is for a good cause, but I don't know, just more, more communication is always good.
As we say, more better, right?
More better.
More better. Great, well, thank you all. And we hope that the Christmas is better for you and you don't trip over a stocking hung by the chimney with care or something to that effect. Perfect, okay. All right, so next we are going to review the process and filling a vacancy for someone who's abandoning us here on Lakewood City Council. And for this, we'll turn to our city attorney, Heidi Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council, Heidi Walker, here to report to you on our process for filling a vacancy. And you have been through this process, I think most of you, before. And I want to appreciate the city clerk for keeping me concise into what the real bottom line is here. Basically, there aren't specific prescribed rules about this other than the 90 days. So what you really want to do is you want to get your process kicked off when you're legally allowed to, which is upon the resignation taking effect. And then have someone appointed before that 90th day runs. So if you look at the last page of the memo, it's page two of the memo, page 26 of the packet. We've given you the timeline in terms of the legal requirements and a proposal for some time windows. And the last sentence, and I completely credit the city clerk for putting this in here, because I'm pretty sure it wasn't me, just realize that the longer you take to complete the process, and you want to take an appropriate amount of time with candidates, obviously, but you run one council member short and I, I am aware when I listen to you every Monday night that you're doing a lot more than just Monday nights. There's a lot of committee work, a lot of appearances and things like that, so it helps to have everyone rowing, if you will. I'd be happy to answer any questions. Or try to.
I think what we want to do. I, I think we need to come up with, obviously, the solicitation candidates because that's a process we did previously. So we're comfortable with that process, I assume. And it would be, we need to be reminded of, I think we went through a few iterations of the application form before we finalized it the last time, as I recall.
We can certainly share with you examples of the previous form that was arrived at by the council.
Yeah, I think.
We would simply disclose that to all of you and have you not respond to create a discussion on the email, but we can certainly send that out to you.
Right. Because we don't have another meeting before. Yeah, right, exactly, actually, we don't have any more meetings this month, do we, this is the last meeting?
I would prefer that you not turn your hospitality next Monday into a meeting.
Right, we're not going to, yeah. So if we're going to solicit candidates, we really need to give you direction tonight to use the form that we used the last time, but we should probably take a quick peek at it without commenting back.
Correct, what, what I will do is we will make sure that that form is sent out to the council. If you have concerns or wish to discuss it, I would ask that you direct that individually to the city manager.
Right, or, yeah, I think that's the way to do it. Or you can trust me, if we've used it the same form the last time, I can say, yeah, that's the same form we used last time, city attorney, go for it. Up to council unless you really want to look at it again, but it's, it's good to circulate a survey season, yeah.
Thank you, Mayor, I just have one question, if, if there's a question in there that maybe needs to be more relevant to where we're at now and I don't remember the questions, but that would be my only thing, maybe something that speaks specifically to some things that we've been dealing with, so that would be.
Really basic.
Is it, no, there's, I think there's something specific.
What's your name, what's your major?
I think it was about three or four questions, but certainly we can just send that out.
Yeah, no, but that would be my only thing, if you would look at that. Yeah, if they're generic, then that's, I just can't remember, I should.
I think the city manager has information for you.
Great. And then in terms of a response date, I mean, this is, oh. Oh, Mr. Caulfield actually has something to say?
I'm sorry, I was on the previous question, the application, the city clerk was able to find what you used last time, which actually wasn't an application, it was a descriptor asking each candidate to submit who, where, when, why, and I think.
It was, it was kind of a statement of interest. Who, when, where, when.
There it is, it's, there it is right there, it's up, it on your, it's on the board behind council member Brandon Stetter as well.
And it was a letter of interest, yeah.
Yeah, a letter of interest, and then when we interviewed them, we, we had questions that we did when we interviewed the candidates.
Right, right.
Two different, so we're talking two different things, interview questions.
I think that looks appropriate. And we should look at the, okay, so the time, when's the next first regular meeting or study session in January? It's the third?
Yes, correct.
So if we get it out, and it's a little late, so maybe it should be the next meeting after January 3rd that we tell people to get their packet in by, which would be the 10th? Because this says, or. But that was the old one.
Applicants for us to submit their documents to the city clerk's office by January 13th.
Yeah, oh, you do have that, okay.
That was last year, or not last year, last, last time we did the process. And then you were presented with the applications during the January 19th regular meeting. And it was on February 1st, you refined the selection process and discussed candidate attributes and interview questions. You invited everyone to make a presentation before the council, I would share with you that at that time, we were making presentations by Zoom.
Yep.
And so this time it would be more likely to be in person, which could be time consuming, the city manager is jumping in again.
If you wanted to follow this, mayor and council, if you wanted to follow the same processes two years ago, actually, the, the date would be January 13th again, which is a Friday. And then those could be presented to you as part of your January 17th regular meeting, which is a Tuesday. Because Monday, Monday the 16th is Dr. King Day.
Let's do that. Mr. Brandon Stetter?
I am trying to remember, we, we did have a session of where we discussed what the interview questions would be when the person appeared before us. Is that a sort of a discussion that is not candidate specific? That can be done in an executive session or does it have to be done in an open session?
No, that would be done in an open session and that was, on the last go around was at the February 1st meeting, you refined your selection process and candidate attributes and interview questions. I do not believe there's an exemption applicable under the Open Public Meetings Act if you're having a general discussion of what you're looking for.
If I recall correctly, we had a subcommittee. Give you, there were several of us who sat on the subcommittee that pulled pulled together the. Sam Sam draft, we did, we drafted the interview questions for the larger discussion by the council.
We can do that. Would that be your preference? We should probably take a look at the questions we had the last time. That would be helpful, too, to throw out in the packet. Yeah, they they may be similar. I just don't remember.
We'll we'll pull those.
Yeah. That was a good process last time. We we certainly got a wealth of candidates, and hopefully we will this time as well. Sure, we will.
And I think the last time it took us around seventy seventy-five days of of the ninety. Um, and I don't recall there being any. Issues that arose by the fact that that for that. Short period of time, there were uh only six council members. And I I don't think that's a concern as long as we stay well within the ninety.
Yeah, the question was, what do you do if there's a three-three tie ultimately on the way the candidate selection process breaks down to a final vote? I guess the short answer is there isn't a tie brain breaking vote by council rules, that you know, the mayor doesn't get a greater vote than anyone else does. So we have not in the thirteen years that many of us have been on this council have had. Situation, most often there's a pretty good consensus at the end of the day. Um, so we can certainly cross that bridge when we come to it.
You know, we didn't have that issue the last time, given the. Step down pattern of 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 our voting. But um I do recall that there have been other just. Other jurisdictions that had that to include one in King County that voted forty-two times before they got to a four-two vote.
We we have our own sort of rank choice voting process here in a sense, yeah. And that would be helpful, too, i- if you wouldn't mind, you send out the the questions, the the process. I just don't remember how we went through the voting, because it was kind of an interesting sort of rank choice deal.
It was a rank choice, and so we'll pull all of that for you so that you know what we did before.
Okay, well, first step, sounds like we got it under control. We're going to send out the notice uh to submit statements of interest. And those should be in by January thirteenth. Great.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you. So on your sheet here, the agenda tonight, we see the items tentatively scheduled for the January three regular city council meeting. January three, two thousand twenty-three, mind you. Including the proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. Proclamation recognizing Genoa Bridge is. The presentation of the Stormwater Outreach Calendar for twenty twenty-three, our youth council will provide a report, as will the Clover Park School District, and then some. Awarding of some contracts and review the financial report for third quarter. So with that, reports by the city manager is next, Mr. Caulfield.
Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, council members. Just a few updates. First, I'd like to. Thank our Parks and Recreation Department for a wonderful parade and. And tree lighting uh under leadership of Mary Dodsworth. Um, she reported back that that's the largest parade that we've had to date um for that event. In terms of number of entries, floats, walkers, participation. Folks who showed up, you know, Santa Claus, Mrs. Claus was here, there might have been two of each, there might have been two of each, may have been. Um, and then there was also the Grinch, but there's only one Grinch. Because there can only be one Grinch.
Right.
Um, on your um. On your uh agenda for next, your next regular meeting, you'll see there's an ordinance there related to the use of locally sourced compost materials. You remember, remember earlier this year, I provided you an update that there was a change in state laws that relates to our solid waste and hazardous management plan through the county. And the county did come back and say, yeah, as a member of that consortium, of which all cities and towns are part of, you do have to adopt this ordinance. The good news is that we're actually pretty much complying with it to begin with. Um, so we do see it as essentially general housekeeping, so I just want to give you a courtesy heads up on that. It did land on this meeting, but if you want to have a study session about it first, we can certainly do that as well, but I just wanted to just give you a heads up on that. Um, the um police recruitment update, um, just wanted to give you an overview of that. So that happened uh last Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. On on Wednesday, we had um the six candidates that came into town. We had a tour. Actually, I want to thank Mr. Bueller and Ms. Dodworth for giving them a a tour around the city. Um, later that afternoon on Wednesday. Um, they ended up being with them over at the Lakewood Police Department for a couple of hours with a meet and greet there. A large turnout from the department. Um, I would say super majority of of officers and um. Um, other support administrative staff all turned out, they all had an opportunity to talk with the candidates. And uh the feedback I've been getting is they really appreciated that opportunity to kind of have their own chance to just meet and talk with the candidates. Um, on Thursday, uh, we had an all day, the the six candidates had an all day um interview in front of three community panels. Um, I really want to thank those members of the community as well as our own staff who participated in that. And uh they were great in providing me with some feedback um regarding each candidate. Later that evening, and I know a number of you showed up, we had a community meet and greet, again, pretty good turnout from the community and um. Was able to get some good feedback and insight on that. On Friday, um, the candidates had another round of interviews. That one was with myself, our deputy city manager, and our communications manager. Um, that one also went very well. The challenge I have right now is that I've got um six great candidates. Um, and so um I still have a number of material and feedback to go through. So I will be taking what I would describe as a very, very deliberate process. So, for example, I would not expect later this week for me to announce who the preferred candidate or candidates are. I'm just being right up front with you, it could extend into uh early, early part of January. I've got my work cut out for me. Um, so um. I'll keep you appraised as that as that moves as that moves along. Um, I don't know if I mentioned this to you at the last meeting, but I know one of your legislative priorities is, you know, to partner with Camp Murray regarding some improvements at their boat launch. Um, the the good news is that we're going to be meeting with them the first week of January, so they were able to free up some time. And uh we're going to sit down. Um, one of the things that we did put out there is kind of a motivator for them is we said, um. Well, the city council might have some ARPA funds to bring to the table, so I just want to let you know I threw you under the bus there, some ARPA funds. Just to get them to the table. Um, so uh I'll report back on that on 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 how that goes. He um, another key legislative um priority is, you know, getting funding for the state's defense community compatibility account. And as you know, we put in for funding for the North Clear Zone. So um the state, um, you know, they did a call for bids, fifteen were received. The state, according to their priorities, ranked them, City of Lakewood's um North Clear Zone Project ranked number one.
Oh, great.
Um, the total, now our ask is um nine hundred thousand dollars. The total ask for all of the funds is over thirty-seven million. Um, actually, the Lakewood Water District, their projects ranked, they submitted four applications. There's ranked three, four, five, and six. Um, and there's amount to uh probably close to ten million dollars or so. And it has to do with um some wells that they that they want to undertake. Um, but we're certainly in very, very good position. And uh the State Department of Commerce, which is overseeing this, will then be putting that forth to the state legislature to be funded through the state capital budget request. And of course, that's a key priority for us, and so we'll be per uh we'll be pursuing that and working with all of our friends at other uh cities who have. Uh, military installations as their neighbor, just like we do with um with 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 JBLM. Um, our, as you know, our Congresswoman Marilyn Strickland has an office here in City Hall. Long story short, um, her and her team would like to expand their footprint. Myself and the city clerk met with her team um last week or the week before to talk about that. Um, I did let her know that we're going through a city hall redesign, and it is likely that some space will become available, if not the whole third floor. So they are interested in taking some additional space. So um we'll, but once we get to that point, you know, we'll 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 take a look at that. Um, I I do expect to have that redesign done and completed and presented to the council in the first quarter of 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 this year. Um, also, um, I know a couple of our state reps from the twenty-eighth district, Representative Brnovsky and Levitt have expressed an interest in perhaps co-locating. In that space, though, the congressional office, they still need to have some kind of delineation, but there's an opportunity there to for them to share some space. So uh we'd be more than happy to consider to consider that as well. Um, tree code implementation, so we're working on that to kick that off on the new tree code. Implementation. Um, so we're working on that to kick that off in um. Uh, January twenty twenty-three, which is really about public notification and education about what the new code is. So some key components, um, staff training is underway and will continue uh through the end of the year and into January. Pulling together some frequently asked questions. The website will be updated sometime in early January as well to reflect the coming changes as well as. Um, being consistent with some of our other communication tools that we're going to be using. For example, we are going to do a direct mailer. Um, we're going to have one particular message for residential properties, one for uh commercial and industrial properties, and then one for public entities. For example, Western State Hospital or our hos- Western State Hospital or, you know, St. Clair Hospital, our colleges, it's et 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 cetera, et cetera. So um, working on that, we'll also continue to leverage our Lakewood Connections magazine. The timing will be just right in first quarter. But we'll be using the magazine throughout the year to communicate that and actually possibly doing a separate standalone insert in there. Um, rather than taking up space in the magazine itself. Um, of course, social media, our weekly bulletin that we have, we'll also be reaching out to your boards and commissions and either giving them a live update or written update, depending upon who and what they are. Um, regarding the changes to the code and what the new code says. Um, also reaching out to our neighborhood associations, which is something that 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 we always do, and then we'll have some. Um, predetermined and identified contacts here at at City Hall with the community and economic development in terms of who people can go to with questions and things along those lines. Um, you you might have heard me mention um earlier this year that the Lakewood Water District, their Board of Commissioners like to have a joint meeting with the city council. I know you folks were open to that, so they did get back to me because I asked for, okay, what are the policy issues that you would like to talk? So talk about, so the board did send back some questions, but frankly, most of them are operational in nature. So what we'll do is we'll take a stab at providing responses, so then you folks can take a look at it and um, of course, make it your own. Um, and um they're flexible in terms of meeting, so maybe sometime in first quarter. I threw out a Wednesday, that's usually a good day for you folks, so long as it doesn't um get sideways with your planning commission.
Right.
Um, as a follow up from last week, had a conversation with the Pierce County Library Systems Executive Director. Long story short, she's very pleased that we would take ownership of the log once it's moved. Uh, was very clear that she gets to move it, and they're actually looking at moving companies right now to figure out how to get it out of the building. And then move it to a safe location. Uh, Ms. Dodsworth is taking the lead on seeing if we can fit it in a barn so that it can be in a safe and secure um environment. So, but the good news is that the library district is willing to have us take it. Then we did put it on the proposed Arts Commission's work plan for them to then identify a place where it could be permanently or temporarily located, however. You know, you folks want to want to want to handle that.
So Woodcaver Festival.
Um, um, Mayor, I think the city clerk reached out to you. The uh youth council has nominated um uh one Brandon Elliott for the two thousand twenty-three AWC Quality Community Scholarship. And so um if if you're okay with that, we'll send that on to um A to A A W C. Um, I want to thank uh Chief Zaro for facilitating a public safety retail summit last Friday. I know I know the mayor, he kicked it off and a couple of the deputy mayor and council member Bokey showed up. Um, long story short, you know, the feedback that he he got from folks that attended was very, very positive. The feedback he also got was, it seems like Lakewood is doing a lot more than many other cities are doing. Of course, that's all well and good, but still more needs to be done. Um, but I think it was a good opportunity to to hear from some of our businesses, some of the challenges that we're facing, and we can use those examples as we talk with. Our state legislators and others um in the upcoming session as it relates to some of your key public safety. Um, pri- 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 priorities. Um, another kind of um. I would say housekeeping item, the Department of Commerce, if you remember, they awarded the city a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar grant. For um for our comp plan updates relates to housing and some other things, and we've already awarded the contract to Birken Associates to help facilitate that. So uh Department of Commerce does require that the contract be blessed by this body, so we'll be bringing that back. It's actually going to be in two components because the state operates in a fiscal year, so it'll be one contract for eighty-seven-five and a second contract for eighty-seven-five. So I just wanted to just let you know, and 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 unless there's any objection, we'd just like to put it on the consent agenda for your January third third meeting. And then um. As far as your your calendar, um, maybe on uh January third, what I'd like to do in a report by the city manager is just kind of give you an overview of some of the key initiatives and priorities that the council has asked us to. Um, from a policy standpoint, um, move forward in two thousand twenty-three and be able to give you, again, just a quick snapshot of of what we're doing. It's, it'll be another very, very busy year. Um, but um again, I'll be able to share a little bit more information. In 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 January on that. And as far as your calendar goes, this is your last meeting of the year, so. That's what I got.
Great. Any questions for Mr. Caulfield? Is.
When it come uh suggestions, when it comes to the education about the new tree code. Wanted to make sure that uh anybody who gave us comments about the tree code and we have their contact information, if we could. Make sure that they get that. We also received a uh quite a few uh people and organizations reaching out to be on the tree committee. And obviously, only a few could be selected, and it would be great, not only if we could get back, um, include those folks who are on the tree committee. In it, in the education, but also the folks who are not selected, because some of those folks come with um organizations that are not our usual organizations. For example, our boards and commissions are kind of the, you know, it's the same involved people over and over again, and so the more we can reach out to um. To other folks, the better. Thank you.
And actually, if I can add on to that, you know, some of the other things that we're doing is reaching out to like all the tree companies. And folks like that and developers and such as well, so.
Awesome, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. And I'll turn briefly to council comments because we do have an executive session following that. So let's start with Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just some comments, the chief of police meet and greet was, I I think, well attended by the general public. And um I too was impressed with the quality of the candidate, so I I think. Very good pool of folks to um to choose from, and I I agree with the city manager, and it'll be a difficult choice, but. Um, I think clearly the. The the pool of of available candidates clearly indicates is positive for the city of Lakewood and and hopefully positive going forward. Um, the retail theft meeting was interesting, uh, I feel for those folks. I mean, they really do. What became clear is they have really major issues. They've got internal issues with their management that got mentioned. Um, you know, it just tons of theft. I mean, we've we've discussed those those things, we've discussed those things with the legislative delegation, but I'm glad we did it. Um, and I hope we can continue that in the future, but it it really is, it really is a tough situation for these folks. Uh, people are just walking out and stealing stuff and doing it again, and they know who people, they they know who the people are even in some cases, and. It's just tough. Parade went very well, I thought. Um. You know, little rain, little this, little of that, but it's December, and I think everybody really enjoys it. I do want to say going forward on, I believe it's the fifteenth, but it is this week. Um, my that ad hoc PCRC meeting where we're dealing with the road formulas. where we're dealing with the road formulas, that continues. So we're, we're working our way through the documents on that in a very methodical process. So I'll keep you up to date.
Thank you, Councilmember Branstetter.
I'm glad that we've gotten to the end of the year. I think we could use a break. I think we've got a good number of things to, to celebrate having, having completed. And, you know, that just means that we, we sort of have to start on a new list in, 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 in a couple of weeks. But I think we have some accomplishments to be, to, to be proud of. And I think, I think that, not the least of which is we've managed to maintain good relationships with our state legislators, with, 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 with other communities and agencies. So that, you know, we're not really at significant odds with anyone, which let us go forward. That I think the, the question that I am getting asked by people in the community most often continues to be, when will the temporary library open? And I'm telling, you know, telling them that, you know, that I don't have a date, but that there's a location decided, there's a building that has to be built, and then there's a building that has to be moved into before it can become an operational library. So that it is, is something that's measured in multiple months rather than, rather than weeks. And I suspect I will continue to hear from impatient residents who, who are, who are looking for something. And but I'm hoping that the the spattering of pop-up library events around the community to, to help set aside that and be able to do that. And I sincerely hope that the, the library system itself continues and maybe even steps up their interest in terms of keeping the community informed and aware that they're working to, 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 to do that. Because I think that that's going to be most helpful to be able to go and do that. And but I'm not going to be able to be there a week from now. So I would wish, wish you all a yeah, yeah, Merry Christmas and a Happy Holidays, and I will see you on the, on, on the other end.
Great. Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mayor. I too would like to say that I think it was a great year. This was my first full year. And it was a learning experience that I will really take to heart and grow from, and I cannot wait to learn more. So just putting that out there. And it was fabulous. And Saturday was fabulous at the parade. I loved seeing the community out. It was completely packed. And I just thought that that was really great to be back in person and do that parade. And I also attended the police chief's open house, and I thought that that was very informative, and it was great to see that the residents in the community were there too. And so I appreciated that, and it will be a difficult decision. They were great candidates. And then again, I'd like to wish Councilmember Farmer all the best in the future. And thank you so much again. So that is it for me.
Councilmember Farmer.
It has been a really good year, and for me, it's been a really good three years. Again, the collaboration on the council has been outstanding and I'm really proud of our accomplishments. This, a couple of folks have, have asked me, so what do you do on the council? And, and they're interested, interested in possibly, you know, throwing their hat in the ring. And I'm like, well, you, this is a very busy city on, on many fronts. And I, I'm, I'm really proud of all the work, all the work that we and the staff do. The staff are fantastic. I don't want to leave here without saying thank you to the staff. We had a case of COVID in the family, and so I was unable to be at the, at the police meet and greet or the, or the tree lighting this weekend. So I'm very sorry to have missed that. But next year, we will, we will all be healthy and, and, and back into it. My swearing in is the evening of January 5th. I chose a Thursday because I know that you all probably won't be busy on Thursday. So I'm hoping to see you there.
What time is that?
Six PM. And our very own Judge Lisa Mansfield is doing the honors. At Pierce County Annex. Six PM.
Just putting it on my calendar here.
Thursday, January 5th. Six PM, Pierce County Annex. You, you know, they swearings, swearing ins, it'll take about five minutes.
Yeah, right.
Take you longer to drive over there. Six PM, six o'clock. He'd be it. He'd miss it.
Thursday, the fifth.
Yes.
Fantastic. Deputy Mayor Moss.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I did have an opportunity to attend the candidate meet and greet with the candidates, and I appreciated that opportunity, had an opportunity to talk to most of them. Would not want to be the one making the decision. So they were all very good. So and that was good. Thank you. And I too agree that even though I can say this, for the past thirteen years on this council, I can say the growth has been tremendous. We have done, we've accomplished a lot. And it makes you feel good just to think about it. I'm excited to come to the council meeting still. So get to stick with me for a little bit. I enjoyed the parade. It was a lot of fun. It was a lot of people, as has been stated earlier. And the retail of this program from Chief Zaro. What I really appreciated about that was the fact that there was a lot of people here that he was able to explain to them why their hands are tied in so many different ways. Because you hear bits and pieces of it, but to get that setting, that many people in one setting, it really made a difference. They understood better as to why the police have to do the things that they do. And as an honorary commander, I will be attending the graduation, ALS graduation. The last time they had it, they had graduates from all branches of the service. So looking forward to that. And yeah, all branches of the service was included. So that should be going on again. So again, Merry Christmas to all of you that I haven't seen. Linda, good luck. You're not far, because you're right down the street. I know where you live. So, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. It's been a a busy week, if not a busy year, and I echo the comments without repeating all of them. We've had a lot of progress in 2022. We've made great strides forward in our infrastructure improvements and our parks and recreational improvements. Certainly in our personnel enhancements with the police department and staff turnover without missing a beat and communications and elsewhere. So it's been an effective year. The budget we passed, which is not a, a small task. And so we have a very robust biennial budget that we pass. It has all sorts of good policy, ambitious endeavors that are included within that document. So kudos to all of you for doing it. And of course, kudos to Councilmember Farmer for being a great part of that process for not just 2022, but the last three years. So thank you again for that and all your fine work. Specifically in terms of this week, it's just been a blur of activities. Tuesday, I had a chance to meet with Lois Erickson, who's the CEO of St. Clair. She invited me to come and have a conversation, just a meet and greet. And I happened to be there in the tail end when the Korean delegation was also coming over to tour the hospital. So I had a chance to say goodbye to them. They appreciated the chance to see each other once again. But the interesting thing about St. Clair is they really want to obviously be here for the community. They want to make sure that they touch base with us and they want to have us help them improve whatever image issues that may be in the community about it. The thing that's challenging is a medical facility serving a very diverse community is they are losing money hand over fist monthly. I forget if it's two million dollars a month or two million dollars. I mean, it's a huge amount of money. I don't know if that's a quarter or a month or year. It's an astonishing figure.
I don't know what the money, the dollar amount is, Mayor, but it is. But and it's heavily subsidized by the remaining hospitals within their system.
But it's predominantly because of the, the diverseness of the community, and they understand the need and it's their mission to serve. But it's, it is a significant financial burden on them. And so at some point, you know, again, kind of like we did with the retail association, we'll have to have a collective conversation about how we can better utilize systems and social services as opposed to having people just take into St. Clair and just take in the ER and then turned out because it's so costly for a hospital system. But that's a, a long conversation. The short of it is, she's a lovely person, is doing good work here, really wants to be a great partner with Lakewood amidst very challenging financial times. So more to follow on that. On Wednesday, I had the chance to do a video vignette with Superintendent Banner regarding the city's support of youth mental health. They are appreciative of that. And as you may recall, I think we gave about sixty-eight thousand dollars of Samarpa funds to enhance partnership opportunities for youth in the Clovercar School District. And it will be something that goes out to our partners in the community and talks about all good things, youth mental health. I attended the police chief forum as well with many of you this week. It was well done. Mr. Coughfield did a good job in hiring the consultant that helped not only generate interest for call the candidate list down to the six, five or six that we have that are all qualified. And so that speaks, I think, well for Lakewood, that you have such qualified candidates from around the country as well as internally willing to put their hat in the ring to come here. So that's a, a good thing for us. Retail Association meeting the next day or the day of was also, I think, a good step in the right direction. Again, those of you who are here heard me chatting a little bit about the need to have partnerships with regard to public safety because in my humble opinion, a vibrant community must have a vibrant business community. And to have a vibrant business community, we have to make sure that we all work together to create safe environments for our shoppers and our family members to live, work, and play here in Lakewood and to do business here. So that was the essence of the week. It was a busy week. Lakewood Rotary, of course, takes my time on Friday. If you are looking for something interesting to do this Friday, it is the presidential roast. I am the president this year. So if you want to come and see a bunch of people make fun of me for all sorts of interesting things of my past, you're welcome to do that. It's a, it's a noonish timeframe. I'd be happy to support you for lunch if you want to come and watch people make fun of me and, and see some historical interesting vignettes. Mr. Coughfield.
Yes, Mayor. Do we get to throw things as well?
Absolutely.
Or is it just a, or is it just a verbal roast?
Yeah, yeah, I'm sure it'll be. I'm sure it'll be open season. Yeah. So as those of you who have been in Lakewood Rotary for a while, it is their, their big thing to do, you know, the annual presidential roast. Yeah. So and the Tom and Jerry party. Tom and Jerry's are a little adult beverage isk sort of thing that they do during the lunch period. Yeah, I'm sure you will be. Yeah. So it's really kind of fun. It's a fun event and if you want to see me turn various shades of red during the holiday season, well, that's the place to do it. And with that, we will now recess into executive session for approximately thirty minutes pursuant to RCW forty-two thirty-one ten sub one sub I to discuss a legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation. The city isn't, council is not expected to take action following the executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. So at this time, we will be in recess. Thank you very much.